Great, I will call this Board of Selectmen regular meeting to order at 7:01 PM on May 17. So, looking at the agenda, we're going to reschedule the joint session with FinCom. That's something that Aubrey Bono reached out to me and said, we should maybe have quarterly updates with the Finance Committee, which I think makes a lot of sense because most of the issues in Millville surround finances. And so I thought it might make sense for us to have more updates. Announcements?
I don't have any.
Okay, correspondence? I saw the mosquito.
Yeah, so that's, you know, if you wanted to opt out of mosquito spraying that the state provides and for which we're basically paid through the cherry sheet, we pay through the cherry sheet about $15,000. You would have to take action to opt out of that, but, you know, I'll defer to Dustin, the Board of Health, but I'll tell you, I think you're wise to take no action on this at this stage of the game.
Yes, definitely, I would not decide to opt out. They basically drive around, they don't spray in your yard, it's just kind of by your property.
Okay.
So.
And when they had to do the triple E stuff, you know, the pandemic overshadowed that, but the triple E, when they were spraying with the planes and all of that, that was to everybody's benefit too.
Okay. And then the Tri-Valley donation request?
So that's in there, that's, you know, was sent to the Board of Selectmen, so that's why that's in there. I checked with the Senior Center, this entity is looking for a donation. There's nothing in anybody's budget to do this, it's never been done in the past. So it's, it looks like a letter they send out to all the councils on aging and communities looking for a donation. So, I don't know how or how you would take any action, there was nothing recommended by the Senior Center to do, take any action.
Okay, but it said in their letter, because I read it, said that they provide services. So what kind of services do they provide? Do we have any seniors taking advantage of this?
You know, I don't really know, I guess there's maybe some, some things that are being done, but I don't know too much about it beyond no action's been done in the past.
Okay, um, so maybe I'll email the Council on Aging, just to ask if anyone's, anyone's taking advantage of these services, I'd just be curious. And then can a private citizen make this donation on behalf of Millville if they wanted?
I'm sure these folks would welcome any kind of donation.
Okay. All right. I did see meeting minutes for just the 20th, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Oh, am I going too fast, Adrian, Andrew, if you want to stop me and just?
Well, I'm not shy.
Yeah, okay, I know, that's true, what am I thinking? Of course you would speak. But, because I'm just kind of plowing through the agenda, check, check, check. I did not see any updates required to these meeting minutes.
Just, sorry, if I could just step back to the earlier thing, the Tri-Valley thing?
Oh, sure.
Because I did pull up an email from Tina. And so Tri-Valley, she sometimes refers folks to them for things like housing or caregiver programs. So, it's, you know, what they do beyond that is apparently unknown by the senior folks management.
Okay.
Yep.
Just nice to know, though.
Yes.
So they are offering some additional support referrals and things like that?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay, now I'm going to move on to minutes, any concerns?
So, I think my, I'm thinking that the Article 9 vote, roll call vote, on, it's page 10 of the packet, I think Andrew voted nay and I voted aye on that. So I think the, the roll call vote just needs to be changed. Andrew, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Nine, okay, got it, yeah.
And then, the only other thing, which isn't really a big deal, but it happens all the time, is on the motion made by Jennifer Guilford, Article 14, my last name spelled incorrectly, should be P-E-T-T-I-T, but that's the only place, so. I think that was it that I had.
So I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes on April 20th with the proposed changes.
Motion to approve April 20th meeting minutes with corrections made.
Second. All's in favor? Aye.
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 I forgot to do discussion. Did you want to discuss anything else in the minutes? Too late now, okay. Um, so Dustin, do you say your name, Chicorelli?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so Dustin is joining us from the Board of Health to give us a quick update on the pandemic. And today is, as I was saying, sunshine and rainbows.
Uh, yes, Governor Baker is finally easing up and he's gonna stop the face covering order on May 29th. But before that, as for Millville, Millville's been very good, our numbers have been very low. As of the last four weeks, there have only been four COVID cases in 14 days. It was advised to keep up these Zoom meetings for the town meetings to accommodate the people that are not vaccinated or have underlying issues. So, I would continue, I remember it was, we were pre-talking about that before we went on live.
Yeah. No, so that's good to know, I didn't, I didn't catch that. So they're advising to continue with Zoom meetings for all public meetings for how much longer? For six more months, three more months?
That hasn't been established yet.
Okay.
It's very fluid, I guess, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, we are, Massachusetts leads the nation in the number of people vaccinated. So, I mean, I guess Baker's doing an okay job. Like I said, the masks will be lifted May 29th with some exceptions. You know, on public, you'll still need to wear masks on like private transportation and in healthcare facilities, but for the most part, you will not need to wear a mask anymore.
Great, I'll probably still wear a mask. I was actually wearing a mask before it was fashionable because I have allergies. And so I used to take the train that, the commuter rail into Boston and it really helped, like, because certain scents would really set it off. And so I was wearing masks before it was cool to do so. And people would look at me funny on the train. But it helped my allergies.
That's about it, everything's moving along quite well, so.
Great, so that's really good to know, so it looks like we'll continue them with Zoom meetings until directed otherwise. And then even from a convenience factor, you know, it might be helpful to kind of hear from people in Millville if they would want, even when we can do all in person, if we could do, maybe we select the first meeting of the month as always in person, and then the second meeting of the month is always Zoom. And we can, just to give a little bit more flexibility, I like the Zoom meetings. But I certainly wouldn't want to, anyone to feel like they didn't have access to us. So if we did maybe a hybrid model, that might be something to think about.
Yeah, once we're, us up to the Board of Selectmen, once we are allowed, that we could have open meetings in, in person again.
Yeah. Sounds good. Dustin, is there any other help or support you need from the Board of Selectmen?
Um, no, everything's been well, Sherri does an outstanding job. I mean, she really is the Board of Health, more or less, because all of us have, you know, full-time jobs. So it's tough, but, um, no, things are going well and the Board has been more than helpful when we've needed them.
Okay, great, does anyone else have any questions or comments for Dustin?
One thing I would say.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, one thing I would say is that we'd have to check with the open meeting laws, because I know that they made an exception due to the pandemic. But if they hadn't changed that, if they do go back, you know, we'd have to kind of double-check that to see how that would work.
Yeah, I was actually just reading the email that came out today. The, and it does say the state of emergency, that Baker study will end the current state of emergency on June 15th, which gives cities and towns the ability to hold virtual meetings and hearings and expedite permitting and allowances for outdoor dining businesses and among other things. But it said, because cities and towns need time to plan and implement municipal operations and changes, MMA is working with the administration and legislature to enact legislation to extend flexibilities granted to municipalities during the state of emergency, such as the ability to hold remote town meetings and expedite changes in alcohol licensing. So, the next meeting we have is before June 15th. I'm sure there will be more guidance that comes out before that, or in the meantime.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Well, Dustin, thank you so much for joining, you're more than welcome to stay on the meeting, but if you want to drop, because you have other things to do, that's also fine.
Oh, you're very welcome, you guys have a good evening.
Thanks you too.
Thanks you too.
Thanks, Dustin.
Got it, bye.
Okay, so, highway is next with a snow and ice discussion. So Brian, one of the things that I wanted to look at, and I'm happy to help you go through invoices if needed, could be to look at how we're spending on salts for the last couple of years. I know the roads are really good and I do appreciate that immensely. But I also was wondering about, because we all have well water and things like that, are there any concerns? And if we're spending more, and if you're like, we're spending exactly the same every single year, then fine.
Well, there's no year that, in two that are the same, you can't, I mean, I don't feel you can get a, say, one year to the other, that you're gonna send the, spend the same amount in salt, because you could have one year, which we've had, where you have a lot of ice and/or freezing rain. And/or if you have, you know, two feet of snow, you don't need as much salt. You know, you have those bigger storms that we had in 2015, you're gonna plow more than you're gonna use salt. But if you have like this, where we have, you know, a lot of, you know, two-inch storms, it's kind of a catch-22, how far do you keep putting salt before you, you know, pay the plows to go on the road and wear down their edges? I mean, it's, it's easier, I've said it for 10 years now, it's easier to handle two or three feet of snow than it is an ice storm. You get an ice storm, you know, you treat the roads and we think we're good. And instantly, the cops are calling us again, because, and believe it or not, I mean, as small as Millville is, we have a different climate piece between Upper Chestnut Hill Road and the south side of town, you know, near the bike path. We've had no snow over here, and we've had two or three inches up on the hill and freezing rain. So, it's hard to compare year to year in your usage of salt. And just keep in mind, I mean, I firmly also believe, you know, we gotta be careful because of, because of wells. But another repercussion of not using salt and maybe going to more of the sand mixture for traction and sand doesn't melt the ice, but, you know, it helps with traction. But the repercussion of that becomes stormwater, street sweeping. There's, they're, they're coming down very hard on that with, with putting the sand in the storm drains and they're, you know, calling it contaminated, uh, once it, you know, gets in the storm drain and you gotta take it out. It's, you know, it's a big vicious circle. I'm open for, you know, different ideas and, you know, someone has one.
So I definitely defer to you, Brian, you know more about this than I do, like, for sure, I was just.
Yeah, believe me, I don't go out there and just throw, throw, you know, salt at it. And I'm not saying, you're saying we do, but, you know, sometimes we'll salt the road and you might see the plow walk the road, you know, half an hour or an hour later. And some, you know, the people on this great internet world, they don't like to speak their mind in public, but they'll get on there and type and, you know, say what you're doing. But, you know, they don't understand the logistics behind it. And, you know, they're not out there at 2:00 in the morning making the call, because I just talked to the superintendent and they're gonna, you know, we didn't have that problem so much this year, but they're gonna have school on time and it's on my shoulders for all of these school buses, let alone we're entertaining more buses coming to Millville now. And till you have to make that call, it's, it's pretty weight-bearing and stressful to make that decision. And when it comes down to it, if it calls, you know, for a plow or more salt, it's gonna get it.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're calling for school, you know, that's, that's a lot of liability right there. And the last thing I ever want to see is anyone get hurt, let alone a child.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, the typing people, I like to call them keyboard warriors.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Or keyboard active.
I've said it before and I'll say it to this board, seeing you, you know, you're, my first time in front of you, I don't answer to the internet, meaning social media. You, you will not see me answer it. If you need me, you need to pick up the phone and call me. Yes, there is email, but if, if you need me or you need something done today, or there's urgency, pick up the phone, even if you sent an email. I had it with two people today, they sent emails the end of, end of last week. Well, I'm not, you know, that computer savvy and within an email, something gets buried into, into it and you really gotta click your way down and you, you want me, pick up the phone. And that's what this person did, guess what? They got, you know, they got a reaction and they got what they needed done right away.
Right.
We've had it with snow and ice, somebody says, you know, the snowdrifts are going over Thayer Street and they put it on Facebook. Well, four hours, four hours later, yeah, the buses couldn't get through because of snowdrifts and nobody picked up the phone, but they typed it on Facebook.
Yep, no, I agree. Okay, no, so that's really helpful for a discussion. Peter, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, could I just add a couple of things, you know, first of all, Brian, you know, he, he and his guys are our guys, the guys he's engaged to be the independent plow folks are out there in the middle of the night and the rest of us are nice and warm and cozy. So I always appreciate that. Just to put a few things in perspective, in this past years, we spent, this past year, this past season, we spent 154 grand, okay? About 11 of that was overtime for our employees. About five grand of it was for some vehicle repairs. 75 grand is for the outside service providers, the plow guys that we pay a rate per hour for the hours they're putting in each storm, whether it's ice or snow. And then the last piece, about 60 grand for the materials, which would be your salt and your sand and various things. So that just gives you, this is one, you know, one year's spend, if you will, on that. And sometimes Brian, you know, bulks up depending on the buying opportunity, either ahead of the season or at the end of the season, some of the, the salt supplies and whatnot. And I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but that's just sort of my understanding. If he wanted to speak to that and also speak to, this is the second year of using the independent contractors managed by Brian. And I think, you know, people would suggest that the roads have been pretty safe the last couple of years under this process and the road availability, if you will, was pretty timely.
Yeah, I agree with that. Brian, I'm sorry, did you want to say something else? And then Adrian, I'll go over to you.
No, I think I'm good, actually, I do have a question to, what was the contractor's rate? If you don't mind me, if you could repeat that?
Yeah, it was about 75,000 for the, the season, the year.
Okay, 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 very, very good, no, that, that makes sense. And I'm sure if you broke out the, out of that 75,000, if you broke out the front end loader, that would be a big chunk of it and going forward, we're gonna, you know, we don't have that in sight yet. Well, it is in sight, we don't have it, anything in stone yet. But that, that's gonna be a changing point too, which you all know about.
Yep. Well, that was my question, Brian, was about the capital investments that we should hopefully have on the road by the time it snows again. So that's promising.
Yeah, the one piece we're missing is that the front loader backhoe for loading of material, that, you know, the truck is ready to go. We actually got a little excited, probably the only ones that got excited when it snowed in April on us, because that was our maiden voyage, we get to try out the new piece of equipment. And as Peter says, we get to play with it. So, yeah, you know, that's in, in place, the next piece is the front loader. I don't have a time or date on that yet, I've done some legwork and other things and life has interfered, so we're gonna get back on track with that right after the Memorial Day holiday, I'm sure.
Okay, sounds good.
Fantastic, thanks.
Thank you.
And I think, I'm sorry we didn't put on the agenda tonight, Brian, so we'll have to invite you back. I know we need to talk about road repairs or anything like that. I know that we held the budget line item flat. And that was.
Actually, that, that line item got cut $1,500 to my, my understanding.
Okay. So we should probably have a, a future meeting to talk about, like, what your plan is for road repairs and things like that, so we can kind of estimate what is needed. And then, you know, maybe one of us can go around with you, I will volunteer to do that. Look at the roads and what your plan is and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry we didn't put them on the agenda tonight, you'll have to ask you back.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
I agree with the Zoom meetings make it a little easier.
Yeah, they do. Does anyone else have any other questions for Brian regarding snow and ice? Okay, so Brian, you're more than welcome to hang out with us, but if you want to go and do other things, that's also perfectly fine.
All right, I thank you for the invite and we'll talk to you soon.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, so, for new business, I just wanted to put a town meeting review. I thought the meeting went well, it went along fairly smoothly and then not too long of a time, which is always good. And it seemed like the social distancing inside with masks and everything worked out fairly well. I'm glad we passed the budget with no changes, which I think is very nice. I don't know if anyone else had any other comments?
I think it went rather well, considering everything.
Yeah, I agree with both of you, was a pretty smooth town meeting compared to what we've seen in the past few years, so that was good.
Um, so, 7B, so, actually covered one of the things here with Brian. So I wanted to look at outstanding funds that have not been, that have been allocated, not yet spent. Because if you remember at the town meeting, we were able to kind of cover the police cruiser with different things that had been allocated and kind of pulled them over. And I didn't mind doing that, but I guess we're not a particularly wealthy town. So I'm wondering if we have any more money floating out there that's not yet spent. And so the only thing that I can think of is the front loader. Peter, I don't know if you're aware of anything else where we've allocated budget, where the money's kind of hanging out waiting to be spent?
Yeah, so if you, I think in your packet, there's a one-page thing with my hieroglyphics on it that showed the, you know, the sources of the cruiser monies as well as the highway plow, you know, the truck Brian's talking about, the backhoe, front end loader, rather. There is one item on there, I don't know enough about it yet. It's right at the very top, it's 13,000 for Capital Landscape Preservation Master Plan. So somewhere along the way, money was set aside to do something related to that that has yet to be spent. If we had the original town accountant, and assuming the town accountant was not under indictment, that would be a fair question for that person, because he, that would be the kind of thing he would know about. I asked Derek to look into that, but he didn't get too far. I've yet to push with terror to see if we can figure that out. But I think we will want to understand that better, because if it's needed, it will stay there and get used at some point. Otherwise, it might be something that could roll into the free cash calculation at the end of this year. So, we'll see, more to follow, okay? I just don't know anything about it.
Is the only thing that that could happen with Peter at a town meeting, it would have had to have been voted on? Or it could have been allocated some other way?
Yeah, I don't know, it might have been, I don't know of a town meeting vote on that. We haven't, you know, I haven't asked the clerk to look into it either, it's not been on the top of the priority list. But it, it could be something where we got some funds from a grant in the past, I just don't know that.
Got it.
And sometimes, you know, we have an outstanding grant, for example, where we may have to send some money back, because we didn't use all of it, that sort of thing. There's one of those floating out there, but they haven't asked for the money back, the state, DLS.
Got it.
Seven grand on something.
The master plan reference makes me think of the previous town administrator had something called the master plan. I don't know if that's.
So there is a very extensive master plan that the town has and it's on the town website, 2018 master plan. But this is specific, it might be a segment of it, I just don't know, I don't, I don't know enough yet.
Okay.
But there's 13 grand of money somewhere set aside, you know, set aside for something.
And then the, the deficit of the 10,900 on the highway truck and plow, do we just need to transfer or have an article to basically subsidize that?
So, so that's a town accountant challenge, if you will. There was an inaccurate estimate of the available capital stabilization fund at the time that the $100,000 was voted for the truck that was purchased. So the truck was purchased, the money was spent, but it turns out there was 11 grand less in the capital fund at the time. Since then, money's been put in there. So, we bought the truck, paid for the truck, he's showing a deficit, this is Derek. I'm befuddled on that one, but I think we'll be working that out with our friend Kim at DLS. So that's to be determined, yeah.
I have no idea what just happened.
Yeah, it's.
It's on page 28 of the PDF. It's like a, it's like a roll forward of what we've allocated for purchases and what is actually spent and then what the ending balance is. So, for the highway truck and plow, it says 89,000 was allocated. But to Peter's point, I think there was a motion to allocate 100,000. So the actual purchase price was 99.9, but because of, I guess, the capital balance at the time, we went into.
Turns out, at the time of the town meeting, when that 100 grand was approved, the motion made at town meeting to spend 100 grand on the truck, everybody thought there was 100 grand there. What had been neglected was that there was 11 grand of the capital stabilization fund set aside for a generator at the police station. So, so there wasn't 100 grand available at that specific point in time, there was only 89,000 available. So, and, and literally moments thereafter, at the same town meeting, a bunch of free cash was put into the capital stabilization fund. So I, in my view, there's no harm, no foul, it's just a timing matter. And this is how Derek chose to account. in my view, there's no harm, no foul. It's just a timing matter, and this is how Derek chose to account for it.
Okay.
So there's a couple of things that I find confusing here. So one is capital police cruiser replacement for ten thousand dollars. And then capital police cruiser for nine-three-seven-two. So that's the two together.
Yes.
Okay, but I, I'm sorry, I was expecting to see nineteen, okay?
Yep.
And then ten thousand for computer equipment, forty-five thousand for a cruiser. That was last year's appropriated amount, I assume.
Yes.
Okay. And then ten thousand for tasers, ten thousand for the boiler, twenty for the ambulance, which we also reallocated. Okay. Okay.
Yep, so there's still a fire boiler, ten thousand. That'll probably free up as well.
Okay. So I don't know, a Capital Landscape Preservation Master Plan, I don't know that we need a, a master plan for landscaping. Do you know what I mean? Like, what are, we have so many other things that we need. So I think that we should, um, at the special town meeting in the fall, you know, roll that into free cash or put that back into stabilization or something else. And then it looks like everything else is fine. Okay. Peter, thank you so much for looking into this. I really appreciate it.
More questions than answers.
No, I think it's good. Okay. I'm gonna move on to the American Rescue Plan Act discussion. So this was sent out last week, it looks like on the tenth.
So that's an actual fact sheet from the Treasury, the federal Treasury, US Treasury Department.
Okay.
On what we call the ARPA funds. Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Well, I see water in there.
I know, I was thinking that.
That's the only thing that jumps out is, uh, maybe there's opportunity to do something, right?
Yes.
I wonder about broadband too, just because I remember seeing on social media that there's actually a street in Millville that doesn't have any access. I don't know if that's true.
Or it's getting it from Rhode Island. I'm just not sure which is the story.
Okay.
But in any event, I, I guess the read of this, if you read this and come away, at least I read it, I highlight it, I reread it. I don't come away from this as unders, having a full understanding of how in heck we're gonna put to good use nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I was thinking that too.
Okay.
The struggle is real to spend all this money.
Yes. And so there is going to be more guidance and guidance from the state, because there, we have to work through the state to get CARES monies. We have to work, and I presume we'll have to work through the same folks to get at the ARPA money in terms of how we spend it. And so there will be more guidance. There's a seminar Wednesday afternoon from MMA on, on, you know, trying to interpret what this eight-page document is saying. So there's still more that the experts at the state really don't know how to advise us yet. And at the same time, I think by the end of, maybe by next week, we'll have four hundred and seventy-five thousand bucks in the bank of Millville from, of ARPA funds, fifty percent of the ARPA funds. So I mean, we're gonna get the money. We just don't, there's no real good guidance on how to spend it. It's crazy.
Yeah.
And so, yes, there, you know, I was thinking maybe there's equipment we can get of various nature. There's, you know, there's some talk of, dealing with first responders of some sort, but then they outline who those are, staff at nursing homes and things like that. It's not specifically our police and fire getting some benefits out of this. So anyway, it's a lot of dough. It's a great problem to have figuring out how to spend it. This doesn't tell us enough. It tells you ways you can't use it. It, it tells you, for example, if we were a larger community that had a lot of, you know, restaurants and the extra sales tax on food and, and, and drinks and whatnot, that we would have forfeited because places were closed, that would have hurt our revenue stream of the town. This allows for making up that lost revenue. Millville didn't, didn't really lose revenue.
Right. Yeah, one thing I did see, so if you look at the top of page four, it says service to address behavioral healthcare needs exacerbated by the pandemic, including, because if you look behavioral healthcare, I was wondering there where it says services are outreach to promote access to health and social services. So for social services, would that include the senior center or the library?
You know, that's gonna be a valid argument to make. Might be a bit of a stretch, and again,
I don't want to stretch anything too much. I'm not wearing orange jumpsuits for anyone.
We're not gonna be providing social services per se, but yes, the, the senior center staff have spent a portion of their time under the CARES Act even, which we, we've argued some portion of their time is covered by CARES Act funds. So this is CARES Act plus.
Yep. Well, because I was thinking like the van, for example, that's, I think, would fall under there pretty clearly.
Yeah, I agree with you, because it's services or outreach to promote access to health and social services, and that's what they do for them.
Yeah.
A large portion of what they do, right, is help seniors get to, um, medical appointments and.
That is correct, but they would also, at least in the CARES Act, and I, I didn't, you know, I haven't fully digested all of this, but they typically say for spending for things which aren't already budgeted. Now, we budget for the senior van already. Arguably, we, it's been needed more, so some of the additional cost and services would be covered by perhaps this as well as the CARES Act, but it is a, already a budgeted item. So there's some gray areas that we, I will say we do take advantage of as well as we can.
Yeah.
I guess the other.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I guess the other question is, are there services that Millville could provide to our population of people that we are not currently providing because we don't have the funds to do that? So, just a thought. I don't know what those may be, but, but there is a possibility for that.
What, what, what would they be? And what business do we want to be in? Do we want to be in a, you know, almost a medical or psychological service provider or social service provider? And if so, that's a whole new kind of business model for the town, and that has its own ramifications. Just having been in the business of some sorts of things and trying to look to expand the business in the past, and the the then board said, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want to risk the legal exposure that we create by doing stuff like what you're describing.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess we have to kind of sit tight and wait for more guidance.
More guidance, and, you know, we'll have, this will allow spending through, uh, twenty-twenty-four. So there's multiple years of utilization of these funds that are coming our way.
Well, I think it would be interesting to at least, I mean, we had already put on our goals to look at the water situation at Millville, and with like a chunk of money of this size that we're looking that may be hard for us to spend is, we should just revisit. Peter, I know you've had experts out there multiple times that may or, you know, think, or that think that we don't necessarily need to spend the funds on a new water system, but given this, we may just want to look at it because of the operational cost. And can this, and maybe because we already budget for it, but can this be used to fund all of the EPA water testing that we're doing up there as well, opposed to coming out of the budget?
Including what we just did a reserve fund transfer for. So I would look to see if we could retroactively apply those funds to the additional scope of, uh, conditions that were put in place by the Mast EP and the, you know, all that money we spent that we covered with a reserve fund transfer. To the extent it can fall under this, yes. I also think, yes, we should look to bring in, we did have an expert did a free of charge. He's now, you know, hung out his own shingle. He is one of the world's leading experts, and he's located in Worcester. He's familiar with what we do to look at the long-term solution for the town, not just, are we, is what we're doing, doing a good job. That's what he did previously. So.
Okay.
That's a good, will be a good use of this, I think.
Yeah, so, and then Peter, you just mentioned we have until twenty-twenty-four.
I'm pretty sure that's what the date is, yeah.
And it, because I did see we have half now and then half in a year.
Yeah, but you still have to justify how you spend it, and you have that length of time to use it.
Yeah, on page two, they're like, you have broad flexibility to decide. I'm like, this doesn't sound like broad flexibility. It sounds very specific. They lie to us in that documentation.
So for example, um, just back to the CARES Act is this ARPA thing, a lesser version of this ARPA, okay, if we just kind of use that as an example. We ran into a challenge with one of our, with our grass mowing company that we contract with every year, who came back to us just last week and said they can't do it, they can't find the people. And they can't find the people because they can't hire them because of, you know, unemployment benefits and all that sort of thing. They won't, you know, so there's the argument. So I look at that and I say, that's a pandemic-caused problem where, jeez, the opportunity surfaced to maybe we can use CARES money, for which we have some remaining, to purchase mowing equipment and do it ourselves, right? And use the budgeted amount to cover the cost of the additional workers that we might need, and use CARES money to buy the equipment, mower, you know, industrial-grade mower. So I went to the CARES guy at the state with that, just that argument, and comes right back, says, no, can't do it. It's not a CARES fund. So it's, as, as plain as day as it might be to us, it isn't always following the rules that the state folks and the feds interpret. That's my moral of the story. And I said I wasn't gonna talk much.
Here, you can talk as much as you want. It's totally fine. So you mentioned on Wednesday afternoon, there's a webinar or something. Are you attending that?
Uh, I, I actually will be on a plane, I think, while it's taking place, but it'll be, uh, they tape though, so it'll be, you know, viewable.
Okay. Do you have, I didn't see the link. Do we have the link to that? Because maybe I can.
I'll forward it, the MMA, you know, invite. I'll, I'll send that to you, to you all.
No. Oh, here it is. Join us, Treasury Guards and ARPA Funds. May twentieth at four. Okay, I got it. I'll try to register. Okay, cool. All right, so I'm gonna move on from the American Rescue Plan Act. And we have review of senior veteran tax work off programs. I was just wondering how, how many people have taken advantage of it and how much.
So we haven't gone out. There are two people that are taking advantage at the senior center. They had specific things that they wanted to do sooner than later. We weren't going to let people into the building but we're now getting ready to do that. So we'll likely be reaching out in the next, within the next several weeks for at least three people, maybe four for town hall. I think the library can use some help. I checked with the chief. I mean, I think there's a, there's a bit of a challenge of bringing somebody into the police department to do stuff to help Trish out. So more to follow on that. Clerk needs a, somebody, Lincoln needs somebody, Highway, I think Brian's gonna need somebody. A lot of it's more filing and organization to start and then see where it goes from there with folks. And it's, you know, basically sixty, seventy hours between now and the end of the year that each individual would be able to do.
Okay. And how many individuals are you capping it?
So it's a ten, and it's, three of them are to be veterans and seven could be seniors, seniors and/or veterans.
Okay. Great.
So there's two already, two slots taken. There'll be eight more to be available. Half of those at least will be in town hall. No skills needed, just a pulse and a and a willing attitude to dig in and help where help is needed.
All right, sounds good. I'm gonna move on to municipal aggregation.
Yes. So tomorrow, so Millville years ago decided to do municipal aggregation, which allows residents to participate in getting, where the town negotiates using a consultant, a three-year contract for municipal aggregation at a specified rate over the three-year period.
And this is for the electricity?
For the electricity, the, the, the actual electricity source. So folks who have not, and folks can opt out of it. I think two-thirds, three-quarters of the folks that are eligible in town do use the municipal aggregation. And this electricity is provided by, uh, direct energy under the current contract, and that goes through November. Shows up on the National Grid bill. So what you're looking at, which is all redacted, is, uh, last week's preliminary bid quotes, but you're not seeing the amounts because I can't, it's confidential, and I don't want it to be a public record. But I've reviewed them with, uh, we use Colonial Power Group as our consultant. We don't pay them. They take, you know, a cent on the dollar basically out of this whole process. And they, they go out to bid, and they're out to bid with, you know, five companies right now who have all provided preliminary prices, and tomorrow their bid prices are coming in tomorrow, and I'll be sitting in on that. And the bid prices are vary by the type of electric supply, and there's a half dozen of them, starting from just the standard retail electric supply, which is the lowest cost, okay? All the way through a hundred percent green sourced, Massachusetts classes with higher and higher levels of green sourcing. And so each one of those categories, as you go down through the five or six there, are at a higher cost. So me not being too smart, even though I've been in the clean energy business for fifteen years, um, and seen all the various, I call them snake oil salesmen of stuff, I'm just going for cost as I think the right way to go. And I asked the question, why would anybody want to go for these other sources that are more expensive? Well, that's if the municipality thinks it's the right thing to do and, you know, do, you're making the planet a better place. We already do that because we're on the, on the, uh, blue wave solar. So we have a fairly significant solar commitment by the town. Anyway, so what I'm looking, what I need is your comfort level, that I'll be able to make the right judgment on the term, which I think will be thirty-six months based on the preliminary bids, and the vendor, which will be the lowest-cost one, and I think it'll be just standard retail is what I'm, what I would do. Because I don't see the benefit of spending more for, you know, maybe do good, maybe, maybe saving the planet, but hard to quantify. People will still be able to opt out. It looks like the pricing is gonna come in lower than you would likely do on National Grid. You remember the gentleman from National Grid that he spoke to? I asked him about this aggregation. He says where he lives, he goes right to, he opts into the aggregation. So he, he, he'd choose a lower-cost aggregation deal than he would his own employer's source of electricity, even though it's, the differences are fairly nominal. So that's what's gonna happen tomorrow. The only thing is, a week ago was just as the different company Colonial Power, whatever it was, where the pipeline got compromised and the gasoline flow got compromised. I asked these guys at, uh, our consultants whether that's likely to spook I asked these guys at, uh, our consultants whether that's likely to spook these providers and the pricing that they gave us last week to what they're going to do tomorrow. Because it, you know, price, it, it has no direct impact, but it might. And, uh, they thought that was a very good question to which they had no answer, but they were also curious to see how it turns out. They're, they're, they are experts, these consultants in electric cost and supply and demand and all that sort of stuff. So, uh, they think this time around is probably a good time to lock something in because they only foresee in their crystal balls, uh, higher and higher electric costs, prices. So making the move now, the generally costs lower at this time of year than it would, uh, in November, for example.
If I knew how to raise my hand, I would. I have a question. I'm not used to Zoom. I use Teams at work. Um, so is this different? You said the eligible population, Peter. So is this different, like mass? Like basically you can choose your supplier. If you go on to like National Grid, then they have like a supplier list for Massachusetts that you can call around and get a rate, whatever the rate happens to be at the time and whatever length that you want to, um, sign a contract for. So is this different than that or are there only certain eligible people or how does?
Yeah, I don't, I can't.
Yeah.
I can't, I'm no expert. I'm as expert as you're hearing me tonight, okay? You can opt in to do whatever you want with any one of these people. People knock on your door, say, would you like to, you know, get our energy supply from us? And you say, oh, sure. And then they sign you up for sixteen years and it costs you something to get out of it. This is where the town is part of a, you know, purchasing power aggregates, you know, has greater purchasing power than you would to buy from the, the guy knocking on your door. So, um, I don't know that there are differences in the, uh, let me look at something else here. Sorry, while we're talking. I have a summary of the numbers of people participating. And so. There's eleven, in January, there are eleven hundred and seventeen residential customers in Millville. Eight sixty-six were eligible for municipal aggregation. Six hundred and fifty-five chose it. So that's seventy-five percent of the eligible. I don't know what the distinction is between a customer and someone who is eligible for municipal aggregation. I don't know that. Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Would you mind just asking that question next time you talk to the consultants? I'm, I'm just interested. Um, and I mean, I guess from my perspective, I think that it's definitely something that we should continue to do and offer people, especially given how many people are taking advantage of the program.
Yeah. Yeah, I tried to get the Green Energy Committee to, which is just Trish, to, uh, take this on. She knows nothing about this. And so, um, there it is. You're on mute, Jennifer.
Thank you. Um. So to answer your question, Peter, you're looking, making sure we have comfort level with you, making the right decision. And you're looking at the thirty-six month term and going with the lowest vendor. I think that all makes sense. And I have confidence in your ability to pick the.
Right, and we may back up. They may recommend backing up tomorrow. I, we don't, we don't know, but, uh, it's, uh, we could be signing up for something tomorrow and it will be the lowest cost. And I've already vetted sort of the, the one entity that's likely to be, be the lowest cost, which is one of the smaller entities, but well, uh, well respected. And so no, no issues there.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So moving right along, so the appointment process discussion. So I saw the list of everyone that's has terms expiring and what the vacancies are. I, I think what I just really, I just wanted to maybe get ahead of this a little bit. So that we could appoint hopefully in June instead of a little later. So I guess, can we find out, like, is everyone interested in everyone who's term expired? Are they interested in being reappointed? I know we talked about reviews and there were some rules about that. So I don't know if anyone, you know, it was optional. Someone wants to share some of their good work with us in an email or something like that. And if we could reach out today for their next meeting being on June seventh, that gives people three weeks to kind of think about it, mull it over. If they could let us know by the June first-ish?
Yeah, I'll have to check. Uh, so Diane, the town clerk, keeps this database. She provided these schedules. And that was great. And so she separately initiated to, uh, use the database into a form letter that goes out under my signature. And those letters went out last week asking if they want to re-up. I just don't remember the date we put in there as the.
Okay, no, that's perfect. Awesome.
I already got a couple back of people re-upping that sort of thing. So, so that process is underway. We should be ahead of the game. There will be, you know, we'll wind up doing some follow-ups to people that don't respond, but, uh, as we typically do. So. Yeah, the letters were mailed last week.
Okay, awesome.
Team effort. Sherry sent them out. Um, I signed them. Diane printed them up, put them in, in front of my face and said, Peter, here you go.
Okay, awesome. And then. Is there a way to ask anyone who's asking to be reappointed if they want to? And I guess I'm thinking more of like paid positions because someone who's doing this for free, they're like, probably like, I'm doing it and it's for free. So.
Yeah, I think if you look at the vacancy list, that's really where you see the, the challenges. Those, those are some pretty important committees, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, there's some vacancies, whether it's green community, even conservation, open space and rec. I don't even know what that is, but somebody re-upped for that. He didn't really know what it was, but he re-upped. Parks and Rec needs a couple, zoning board needs a couple. So you've got some, uh, really value-added committees that could use the benefit of, uh, some thoughtful people who might find it rewarding to be on it. So that's my recruiting pitch. Um, but I hear what you're saying. To the extent you have, you know, if you want a policy, I know there were some challenges of, uh, of, uh, employees getting, you know, they're appointed employees, if you will, and whether there's some issues there. But you also don't want, you know, from my perspective, managing and working with those types of folks, you don't want to have the uncertainty looming over their heads either. So it really is what you're, you know, the comfort of the board is. Because you are the appointing authority and appointments that you make is one of the more important things you really do. I think.
Yeah, I just want to give people an opportunity if they felt that they were doing really good work or, and they wanted to share that with us.
And whether, I guess there are other volunteers that may not be doing anything today that have the ability to look at this list. And, and I do think that all of this stuff is available online. And potentially come forward and, and say, I'm interested in this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So that's awesome that those letters went out already. That's really great work. And then, um, we can know maybe by the next meeting what the gaps are.
Yep.
And then we can appoint.
Yeah, I think, and you'll see in the forty-eight hour thing, council on age, and I think they're going to have three vacancies or they have, there's two. I don't see them on here. But, uh, I believe they have two vacancies and just had a resignation today.
Oh, no. Okay. Anything else on the appointment process? Okay, turning on the streetlights, hot topic at the town meeting, next steps.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for a form from Bob Moran to be signed. And I think it's a fairly straightforward form. Brian, I know, uh, hi, you know, Brian Lally had a couple of lights that he had some, you know, wanted to dive a little deeper on that he can do with Bob Moran. But to start the process, it's, it's just a form and I've, you know, I followed up with, but I, you know, I, I don't know where he is right now, but he hasn't responded twice so far. So keep chasing him.
Okay. And then results through four, oh, anything else on streetlights?
So if you wanted to give me approval to sign the form unless it needs anything further, I, it's just get it going, right?
Okay.
And, uh, that he would work with Brian, uh, to the extent Brian needs to work with him on some particular intersections. Otherwise, all the rest are going to be the twenty watt LED lights that we used in the budgeting process and the discussions we had with him.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to empower Peter Crusoe to sign the forms related to turning on the streetlights. That was approved at the town meeting.
Motion to provide, uh, town administrator Peter Crusoe to sign the authority on the streetlights agreement.
Thank you, Andrew. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other discussion?
One bit. Uh, Peter, will we be getting a list of which streetlights will be getting off and like, when that's kind of finalized between, uh, the highway?
I think they'll have a working plan and, um, you know, that'll be a developing thing I would expect. But if recall, uh, there were pretty detailed schedules that showed all of the lights. I can resend those so you have them.
No, no, no. I, I was thinking, because I remember the highway surveyor wanted some, was wanting to, that's what I was wondering, like which, if we'll see like which ones aren't like, were seen deemed unnecessary or.
Okay, yeah. To do that, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 No opposed, since it was four to. Okay, so FY twenty-one results through four thirty. So I was looking at this.
So I'll just tell you the way I look through this while you're.
Yeah, I did look at it, but only on Saturday.
Yeah, so I look for, uh, where we have exposures, right? Understanding there's two months left of the year. But also at the end of the year, there's a lot of sort of catch-up. So you think you got a full ten months in here. You don't really on some items, okay? So then I look to see where the exposures are likely to be. And then there's already a couple jumping out there. And I also look at, uh, where the opportunities are to the extent somewhere towards the, you know, possibly by the second meeting of June. But certainly as we get into that first meeting in July, there will likely be some transfers required of you all. Approval of transfers between accounts where some accounts might be going into deficit and some have excess. So if you look at some excesses, you know, um, if you look at the town hall admin salary, you know, there's some opportunity because we haven't filled a position yet. Uh, we've kept that vacant. And there's other, you know, accounts in there. So there's some room for opportunity there. The police department and their patrol officer, there's some opportunity, but he has some challenges and we'll, you know, we have a executive session about the union thing later. So there'll be some catch-up to be done there. There's opportunities in Norfolk Aggie Transportation. Clearly, we did not need all of the tuition for Tri-County. So there's good opportunity there in transportation and tuition. And when I say opportunity, that means it's either going to be turned back or we tap into it because we need to move it, shift it somewhere else. The, uh, streetlight electricity, there's still some screw up in the bookkeeping there that needs to be fixed.
Can I stop you just for a minute, Peter?
Yeah.
On, um, street sweeping, is that because we really hadn't started until after April? And we expect that we'll expend the, most of that amount?
That's right.
With stormwater?
Yeah, yes. So, and in fact, I just saw a bill for like nine grand or something, just. On the street sweeping.
So to kind of be cheating and looking at the end, so I see allocated, expended and ending. So it seems like we're not going to go over budget, correct?
Correct, yeah. No, we won't go over budget. Um, we might have some deficits.
Have to move some things around.
Have to move things around. That's right. We have opportunity in health insurance. We have opportunity, I think, a little bit in the property liability. So.
It also, sorry to interrupt. I was going to say, it also looks like our veteran services monthly benefits, we haven't really been utilizing that this year either. I know that's always kind of a, it depends on how many people come forward and ask for the benefits and stay in town and, and whatnot. But it does look like there's a little pickup there.
That's right. And I think, you know, most departments are pretty careful about their budgets and track them. And the ones that don't, we continue to work to train.
Okay.
Can I ask another question, Peter? Um, just because it looks like their recreation line hasn't been utilized for recreation, equipment, repairs, maintenance. Would that cover the park that's down by the police station? Um, and I know we've, I thought we had kind of roped it off because of some insurance liability with the equipment that is currently there. Is there opportunity to?
So, uh, so let me speak to that. So that, that money could be used for that. And, and there's that money in there for next year as well. That said, uh, I'm trying to see if we can use CARES Act money to rebuild that playground. If that's what you're talking about, which I think you are, the playground which has been closed right by the police station. Okay? So if I, so I've reached out to the guy at the CARES guy who said, no, I can't, uh, buy a lawnmower. I've, I now asked him, can I, can we rebuild our, uh, you know, to provide recreate, outdoor recreation for the youth and their families in the town? And it seems like a very good use of CARES Act funds. So I'm hoping it'll come back positively, but I wouldn't put money on it. Separately, I actually happened to meet with Kevin Del Giszi, who's Parks and Recreation today. And we're going to use that money to buy the mower that we need to buy to do the, uh, grass cutting. So he's, he's agreed to free that up to buy, you know, equipment. Brian's looking for that for us to do that. So. But otherwise, yes, that money would be a supplement to anything I can get out of the CARES Act money.
Are we okay to move on to liquor license renewal certification? All right.
Good.
Okay.
You know, these are just forms that the state liquor license, ABC, whatever it is, needs, Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. We've submitted what they need. They just need these two forms signed by you. And I've reached out and said, we're going to have just the chair be authorized to sign these two forms.
Okay.
And, uh, there's nothing to it. It's just, uh, I can't sign it. They, uh, they want, wanting you to sign it.
Okay.
Them, these two.
And it's basically just certifying that these are the only businesses in town that have alcohol.
What they're saying is we did not, none failed to renew their licenses. And we provided documentation that the licenses were renewed and the parties signed their retail license renewal forms they needed to send to the state. So that's all in there. This, this, what I'm saying, no, uh, no, nobody fell out of it.
So.
So you have two forms. One is the twenty twenty-one seasonal population increase estimation form. And the other is the renewal certification twenty twenty-one.
Okay. It looked like it was just kind of like all one form. So I just signed both of these and drop them back?
Yes.
Did we vote on it and approve it? Okay.
Yep.
And so, and we only have these for liquor licenses?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that Jennifer Gill sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Alcohol Beverage Commission forms. I'm trying to figure out what this is.
Alcohol Beverage Control, Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Form and Renewal Certification.
Okay, so I'll restart. I'll make a motion for Jennifer Gill to sign the twenty twenty-one seasonal population increase estimation form from the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission. And the Renewal Certification twenty twenty-one form also from the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. I'll sign those and drop them by, along with minutes, I think I owe minutes. Okay. Um, any old business?
Nope.
Alright, Alex, is anyone on for a public forum?
We got five viewers and no questions.
Okay, there's no three-minute limit anymore, I don't know if that makes it more exciting for anyone that they choose to speak up. Now, they can't go on forever and ever because this meeting will be ending this evening at some point, but certainly people can have a little more time, okay? Um, selectmen reports? No one, okay. Town administrator report.
I've already done enough talking, don't you think?
Peter, I really don't mind, I know we tease you, but if you have important things to say, you should say them, okay? Alright, um, items not recently anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the meeting.
I just have one, which is the resignation of Lori Legere from the Council on Aging effective May thirteenth, so if you. Would vote to accept that resignation, that would.
I'm gonna text her, she's not allowed to resign.
I know.
Alright, I guess.
Wrote a nice letter and I'll send that along to you all.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Lori Legere from the Council on Aging.
I don't think we can because it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, okay, we just got it today, so we couldn't have anticipated, so should we wait?
Well, that's why I say it was a forty-eight hours, but it's your, you know, it's your prerogative, uh, I think.
I think I'm into the next meeting, is it really urgent?
Yep.
Okay, we'll meet next weekend. Um, and our next meeting will be June seventh. And we have signatures for the April twentieth minutes, which I will take care of. So I think we're ready to enter executive session for three things. I will read them, can we, so I guess here's a procedural question, Peter. Can we read all three of these and then do one roll call vote, or do I have to do a roll call?
No, I think you can do all three at once, one roll call vote, yep.
Okay. So I will make a motion to enter executive session, only return to open session to adjourn, and we'll enter executive sessions by roll call. Or A, move that the Board of Selectmen enter an executive session for Massachusetts General Law. Um, C thirty A twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one seventy. The town of Millville Police Officers. Move that the Board of Selectmen enter executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy relative to pending litigation, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. And to reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting. Move that the Board of Selectmen entered into executive session for Massachusetts General Law C thirty A twenty-one A one and two. To discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. Or to conduct to collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will turn to open meeting via roll call only to adjourn. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, roll call about Jennifer Gill, aye? Adrian Pettit?
Aye.
Andrew Allard?
Aye.
Todd Trotter?
Aye.
Okay, great. Hey, Alex, if you can make sure we're not recording anymore and that we're not streaming anymore.